Okay, I'll call a meeting to order at six o'clock.
What change?
To the minutes.
Many minutes. I sent you a change on them.
Well, I didn't make the change because you did table it and then you tabled it and asked the finance board to come. That's the only change you sent me.
I thought we-
You didn't discuss the policies.
Right, we've- I thought we made a motion to have the finance board come to the meeting.
Right, which is in there, but you tabled the policies themselves.
Okay.
So...
You okay with that?
All right.
Okay, motion to approve the minutes then.
All right, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can't.
I can't.
You weren't here. All right, so we have to appoint a new chair. So I'm going to nominate Larry Mandell as the new chair.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Alrighty then. I'm back.
Oh, Jesus.
First of all-
Before you take your position as chair, Officer Swain is here and- but he needs to leave, so if you could bump him up-
Yeah, I was gonna- I already put the arrow up there.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Uh, do you want to do it now, Pat?
No, you can switch chairs and-
Oh, I can, I can-
We did.
Yeah, I can, I can do it here for today. First of all, Bettini did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you for your, your dedicated service and-
I haven't left, honey, you've got me for nothing here.
As a chair. Is there anything you'd like to say before I-
No, just keep it short.
She thinks, she thinks that I go overboard sometimes. And Ernie, welcome aboard.
Yes.
Yes.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like to make a statement as the new member of the select board?
Well, I'd like to thank the audience and those out in the viewer audience that voted for me and gave me a vote of confidence and I'll do my best to support you.
Awesome.
Fantastic. So, uh, just want to talk quickly about rules of engagement when I'm, when I'm chair. In the past, as, as we've always done, we save public comments to the end of the meeting and if you have something to, that you want to say, uh, you will, you can get up at the end of the meeting when we open it to public access and say it. That being said, I, you know, if there's, if there's an item that we're about to deliberate on, i.e. if we, if there's a motion that we make and we're about to vote on it and there's something that you feel that you can add that, that will impact the vote or that adds value to the process, uh, I will recognize people prior to the end of the meeting to make a comment on the item that we're deliberating on. Uh, I'm gonna try that and if it gets out of control, I'm gonna end that policy, but I think that a lot of times we might be voting on something and somebody comes up to me afterwards and makes a comment to me that, uh, is a relevant comment that some, and it might be something that I would have wanted to have considered before I voted. It usually doesn't change the outcome, but at the same time, uh, I do want to add, if you can add value to the discussion, I'm, I'm gonna accept comments prior to the end of the meeting. And the other thing is that if we have a guest speaker who, who comes in and is, you know, does a presentation, if you want to ask that guest speaker a question before the end of the meeting, uh, I'm gonna allow for that as well. So, uh, so this is my second time as, as a chair, I can't believe it's been two years, so, uh, let's see. The first thing I want to do is, Pat Swain is gonna introduce a new outreach worker, it's not on the agenda in that order, but I want to change the order of the agenda so that Pat can get in and out of here quickly.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Fancy. We all know everyone voted for you because your wife's the nicest lady around. So, um, you know, the board, the board actually asked myself, Alan Percy, and it was gonna be Cindy Harris and, um, I believe Linda Racine too, um, we were tasked with reviewing the applicants for the outreach coordinator position. Alan, um, decided that he was gonna retire, um, he's been doing a great job. We've had, as the veterans agent in police, we've had a great working relationship with him. Kelly got the inter, got the resumes, um, she sent them to us, we reviewed them and we had interviews and, um, we would like to present to you Jennifer Mott. Jen is a, stand up Jen, Jen's a nice young girl from the town of Holland, she's been working since November down at the, um, Community Center Senior Center, she's the kitchen manager. I've had a lot of interaction with her, um, between doing our lunches and stuff like that. She's, um, been well received at the senior center by all, all people that go there. She was very highly, she worked at Seven Hills, I spoke to her former boss today who could not say enough about her. Um, you know, she said, "Not only did Jen do her job, but she went above and beyond." So, I think she's gonna be a great fit for the town of Holland in the outreach coordinator position, so, Jen.
Thank you, um, I'm just gonna keep it short, I'm very excited for the opportunity and I do have relevant experience and I really like to help, so I'm looking forward to it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Congratulations.
You guys need to make a motion to actually appoint her.
Make a motion to appoint her.
Second.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
So, I guess we'll just get with, we'll, Jen's gonna be, um, kinda coming in and working with, um, Alan, um, over the next couple of weeks.
How long's Alan gonna be?
Till June 30th.
Okay.
So, we'll have to get her sworn in and we'll get her a key to the building and, and stuff like that.
Sharon is here, that can be done right away.
Okay, so I'll just take her upstairs, we'll get her sworn in and, um, we'll get her a key, key and she'll be on her own.
Congratulations.
I just want to say, June 21st, um, police cookout, six o'clock, come one, come all. You don't have to bring, um, a dish or anything, we just like everyone to come and kinda just, um, friends coming together and mingling and talking, so, again, Thursday night, six o'clock at the community center. Thank you.
And the softball game is this Saturday, right?
Yep.
It is.
I have all the information on that.
Okay, cool.
And you have the information on the booys.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
All right, next item on the agenda, uh, finance committee, finance board, uh, did you guys post, uh, an agenda for a joint meeting with the select board? Okay, 'cause I don't think this is technically a joint meeting, I think we just want to discuss a couple of items with the finance board, so, like, Don, are you gonna-
Yeah.
Are you gonna speak to it? There are a couple of issues, uh, number one is, uh, there was $65,000 that went into the stabilization fund when we had the town meeting a few weeks ago and there was some concern and some controversy over that issue specifically, I think it was represented that, uh, that there was no money going into stabilization and then there were, it, to be perfectly honest, the comments that I've received is that it, people, that it was not clearly displaying that money as a separate warrant article was misleading and was used as an excuse to reduce other departments' budgets. So, I mean, I don't want, you know, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but it was an issue that's been raised by the general public. And I want to give you guys an opportunity to address that.
Okay, um, I'm having to read into your comments to understand what your concern is, but I'm looking back at the-
Not necessarily my concern, but like I said, I feel as, uh, you know, as a select board member, I, enough people expressed concern to me that I wanted to just put it in the public forum, a discussion around what happened.
Fine, um, I'm looking at, I have the budget worksheet in front of me and I'm looking back over the last, um, six years, I believe, and every year there has been a $65,000 contribution in the regular budget for capital stabilization, which is exactly what was there this year. So, I'm not, I'm not sure and I, I, we also went through the budget line by line, William Hardy did, and, and talked every line through and nobody, um, said, "Hey, what about that? We could have addressed it then."
Was it not in Ernie's presentation? Was it, was it not in Ernie's presentation, I thought is what I heard.
The disconnect is what I heard is that the, it's not that you, it shouldn't have been in there, it's not that you didn't have a right to put it in there, it's that during the presentation it was stated that zero dollars were going into stabilization and then $65,000 were put into stabilization and that's what got people kinda like, "Whoa, what, what's going on?"
I, I remember, I remember that remark and, and I've discussed it with Ernie since then, um, but I, and I don't, I don't want to put words in Ernie's mouth, but I believe that they said there was no additional money going into stabilization. I don't know if the word additional was actually there, but-
Where's the-
It was, the, the, if you look back, this is, was the slimmest year for stabilization in quite some number of years, so, I, I don't understand, I didn't, I didn't hear exactly in his comments that it said there was no money going into stabilization. We all knew there was.
All right, so I mean, to me, it's more of a issue of communication, I mean, clearly, I mean, from what I see, there wasn't an attempt to, uh, mislead people, to give you guys an excuse to reduce other departments' budgets, I think that's what the concern was. And I'm, what I'm hearing is that that wasn't the issue, it's more of an issue of communication and people hearing what they heard and just, uh, be, being misled as a result of communication as opposed to the finance committee, uh, specific design to mislead.
Well, I, we went, again, we went through it line by line, so I mean, if somebody thought it was misleading, that, that would have been a perfect time to say something. There's also been talk about the warrant, there was no warrant. Well, there, there is no warrant for money going into the stabilization, as, as I understand, at least not the, not the capital stabilization, so there would be no warrant. In years past, we sometimes take what's left over in free cash and put it into a stabilization and because it's coming out of free cash, it requires a warrant. So, but I, I don't understand to what end would we, would, would there be for us to be, uh, I mean, I don't understand what the benefit would be for us to try and slip something through, so clearly that wasn't the case.
And Don, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, you, you do a lot of work and you've done a fantastic job in the past, like I said, I just felt it was my responsibility and our responsibility as a board to just bring the issue, uh, into the public spotlight because there was enough comments for me to realize that, uh, there was some controversy surrounding this whole thing, so that's, that's it, is, you know-
Okay, I hope I've answered your question.
Yeah, yeah, okay. The other item is that you've asked us to, uh, to adopt, uh, fi- financial reserves policy and a debt management policy that, that you guys have already adopted, okay? And by a large, is that, that's-
That we have already adopted?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I believe we submitted to you our recommendation.
You signed it and it's adopted and posted on the page for our user request.
Oh, okay.
Which is, you know, I don't have a lot of problem with it, I just had a couple of questions, you know, just, uh-
Which page are you referring to?
Well, let's start with the financial reserve section, there was, uh, one section under special purpose stabilization fund, getting back to stabilization, I think that, that section needs to be a little bit more generic, especially given the fact that, that, most, that the stabilization funds, as we just discussed, other than one, wasn't funded this year, so, I, I think that not, you, you tell me, tell me if, if you are reading this differently, but if I'm reading special purpose stabilization fund, uh, Holland has four special purpose stabilization funds, capital, road improvement dam and cyclical, we didn't fund road improvement dam or cyclical. The town will appropriate annually to these funds so that the, uh, so that over time they achieved the target balance sufficient to cover future costs, et cetera, et cetera. I guess my point is, is that you may want to choose may as opposed to will, I think you might want to soften that language so that, yeah, in, in the event that we can't fund stabilization, it seems like when I'm reading this paragraph, it's telling, uh, it's basically requiring us to fund the stabilization fund, so my suggestion, and before I would recommend that the select board adopted, would be to soften that language to provide for situations where those stabilization funds aren't, uh, aren't gonna be funded.
We actually throughout this entire document had the exact same discussion many times 'cause we didn't want to say, "You will," you know, like make it a thing.
And unfortunately, what I look to here, are the words that, that help us out here, is
to fund, "The town will appropriate annually to these funds so that over time they achieve target balances sufficient to blah, blah, blah." So, the over time, we believe, is, gives us the out, it doesn't tell you that you have to do it every year.
It actually does, the language with, "will appropriate annually" is a separate clause and legally, that's where you start. So, if you make it "may appropriate annually" or "will do their best to appropriate annually", you will cover yourselves legally that this is gonna, what you're gonna do, but if you don't have the option, you're not gonna have to find funds from somewhere else. So, "will appropriate annually" is the beginning of the sentence, therefore it's taken first and it's your directive.
Okay, so your, your proposal is that it changes from "will" to "may"?
Yeah.
Or, or "shall," whenever possible, appropriate annually, that way you have, you will do it when you have the opportunity. Some type of language like that will give you the ability to base your actions on the amount of money you have to work with. The way you have it right now, you have to put money in every year.
Well, we can-
And even if you didn't read it that way, it's not a big deal to make a small change.
No, that's fine, I, I, I'm not, I'm not an attorney and I understand you're a little more trained in that than I am, so-
You're not saying you're trained, yeah?
So, so, I, I don't read that, that's not the way it was intended, uh, and actually those are their words, not ours.
Yeah, I know, I know, I saw that came, came right out of a-
So, um, the town "may appropriate," is that what you want to put?
I would be okay with that, I mean, I would, if you cha, if you changed "will" to "may", I personally, and I'm not speaking for the rest of the board, but I personally would be comfortable signing off on that document.
Aren't we sharing wording?
My wording was, was "shall appropriate annually when feasible," so that you have, you, you will do it, just like it says you're going to, but the, the, um, the end of the clause gives you the ability to determine whether or not it's feasible that you want to do.
Okay, well, why don't, uh, I don't, I think it would, I would ask that you would present to us then what you want us to take up at our meeting tomorrow and we can take it up and, and get right back to you.
Okay.
I don't think it's right for me to answer for the group.
Yeah, it's fine, that's fine, but you understand my point, I just don't want-
I, I don't understand, I, I, uh, yes, I understand your point, I thought it was already given us that latitude in the current wording, but I have no problem changing it.
And it may or may not, but why, why even create an impolite situation?
Absolutely, I agree.
Okay. Yeah, that was my only comment on the financial reserves and then, under the, the debt management document, I'm okay with the way it is, but what I wanted to suggest, suggested, uh, you may or may not agree, is that there's no mention, number one, of coordinating, uh, debt management with, uh, the capital planning committee, in other words, capital planning, you know, taking the information, uh, from the capital planning committee in terms of, you know, because it's sort of, uh, prospective and, and looking towards what, what our, our future, uh, capital expenditures are gonna be and, and tying, uh, what the capital planning committee comes up with projected debt management, I'm just talking theoretical and you can take this or leave it, uh, but I, I thought that maybe it might be appropriate to incorporate some sort of language that, that, uh, that does some sort of coordination with the capital planning committee. And the other point that I wanted to make is, uh, there's no mention, uh, in terms of debt management regarding our unfunded liability, which is clearly a debt, specifically the OBEP funding, uh, and I think that's a, a major debt that, uh, that we're looking at and specifically, like I said, the unfunded liability and maybe some reference regarding, you know, the finance committee's approach to, uh, to that kind of liability or that kind of debt. Like I said, it's just a suggestion, other than, I mean, I'm, I'm okay with the document as it is, oh, the other thing is technically, uh, under the reporting section, uh, and this just recently changed, so you'd have no way of knowing it, uh, under section E, section one, uh, reporting, the treasurer and financial advisor will report to the board of selectmen, executive secretary, if you could change the executive secretary to town administrator because we just changed the title of executive secretary to town administrator, just so we, uh, begin to incorporate the new name for that position into all of our documentation, if you could make that change, that would be, that would be great too. So, so the first two comments are for you, for your consideration and you can come back to me telling, or you can come back to us, telling us why you, what you did or you didn't do it and why you didn't do it, like I said, I just saw that as something that might be appropriate to include in this document. And then, the other change that I would like to see made is a change in the, uh, name of the, changing the executive secretary to town administrator.
Okay. Now, on the coordination with the cap, capital planning committee, I haven't, I haven't, they talk about that in this document, is the capital planning committee gonna be concerned with debt management? Or is the finance, are they gonna look to the finance committee for suggestions or guidance or opinions or whatever?
Probably looking to the finance committee in terms of, in the town treasurer, in terms of, uh, structuring the debt to accommodate future capital expenditures, okay? So, in other words, I don't, the finance, I mean, the capital planning committee wouldn't be involved specifically in debt management, but they would be giving information to the finance committee, uh, to give them the ability to anticipate future debts and debt management issues associated with those future capital expenditures, so, and I'm not asking you, I'm not, I'm not looking for an answer now, I'm just putting it-
No, I understand, I'm trying to understand what, what, what the homework is, so I, I know what to do.
You're on the capital planning, I, I was on capital planning and Larry's on capital planning and we have discussed maintaining a certain amount of debt, was that just discussion or was that actually part of something the board was for?
I took that as discussion, yeah, it was just as discussion, Kelly.
So, it's definitely on the board's mind, the capital planning committee's mind? So, it's definitely something that, that, um, they would definitely be looking for?
Yeah.
Well, keep in mind that there is a member of the finance board that's, that is a member of the capital planning.
We need a new member of the finance board for that, so, yeah.
And Kelly, the capital planning committee will be working within the parameters of the guidelines that are established by the finance committee, for example, as a result of, uh, you know, these documents, these guidelines, so, I mean, so the capital planning committee is projecting, uh, future capital expenditures and looking for ways to fund those capital expenditures and the specific funding recommendations would come from, specifically the finance committee, town treasurer or whoever else could add value to the valuable input to maybe sources of funding for those capital expenditures, so that's, that's all, I just, just put it on the table, talk about it.
Okay, I'll, I'll need to, it's been a few months since we've reviewed this document, so I'll take another look at it and understand how it describes the coordination between the capital, uh, capital planning committee and, and the finance committee.
And then maybe, like I said, look at the debt with respect to our unfunded liabilities, which is the biggest debt that we have, really. And I know that it's sort of esoteric and actuarially determined and it's just way out there, but at the same time, uh, it may be something that you want to incorporate into the debt management document.
Okay.
That's it, that's all I got.
Very good. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, oh, here.
Oh, okay, thanks, okay. Under all-
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Don. All business.
He's new at this chair, isn't he?
No, no. You're on a border. All right, uh, the, uh, on the, on the north basin, there's a, uh, sign, there's, there's a five mile an hour sign as you enter the cove heading towards the, uh, the boat ramp and, uh, Brian brought to our attention at the, uh, through an email that-
The chief of police, Brian, so that you-
Okay, the chief of police brought to our attention that five miles an hour is technically in violation of our, of our lake bylaws, uh, the lake bylaws says something like head speed or something along those lines, whatever that speed is, it's about six and a half miles an hour, so we've got a five mile an hour sign. What he suggested is we replace that five mile an hour sign with a no wake sign and that should be ambiguous enough to cover, uh, to, to not limit somebody to five miles an hour and to keep people within a reasonable speed limit. The cost of that, uh, is about, the cost of that sign is $250, we could, could take that out of our lake maintenance budget.
Can I ask a question about that?
We, I haven't made a motion yet, you know, I, what, well, you, you weren't here, I said that-
I was here.
Oh, you were here, okay, when, when I've made a motion, you can raise your hand. Uh, so I'd, I'd like to move that the, uh, select board approve, uh, an expenditure of up to- So, do I have a motion?
You have a motion to purchase a sign for $250 for the no wake sign, for the lake.
Second.
Does, uh-
Purchase it, boy.
Purchase, yeah, now do you, do you have something to say about it?
Yeah, I do, um, so, it's gonna come out of lake maintenance, why isn't it coming, isn't no wake sign a safety issue?
It could be either, it could be either.
I mean, I don't, yeah, we have the money in lake maintenance, that's fine, but I am curious.
Yeah, it could come out of the police budget, it could come, come out of, uh, uh-
And, and the police are gonna be responsible for putting it in and taking it out versus Dick Haller.
Right, exactly, and that was outlined in, uh, the chief's email.
Right, and the other signs that Dick was talking about at the last meeting, you're gonna purchase those as well and the police department's gonna put them in and take them out?
We didn't talk about the purchasing of any of the signs.
I thought Dick was requesting purchasing a couple of more signs.
He did, but we haven't approved anything.
Oh, okay.
We were just talking about it.
Okay.
We'll cross that bridge when we come to it, in the meantime, like I said, I at least want to replace the five mile an hour sign that's, that's out there right now with a no wake sign.
Well, if we're gonna purchase them, the money that we have extra in lake maintenance is there.
I don't feel like we need, we don't need three signs, I don't think, I mean, so, I mean, the, all right, the, so what I have on the ta, what, the motion is to, uh, purchase one no wake sign.
The 250, so I made the motion, Ernie seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, new business, open, open highway bids?
Yes. Some, some of the time it is, please.
Six thirty.
Six twenty.
Sorry about how boring this is about to get, but, this year, because procurement raised the levels of what is, um, required to go out to bid, the highway did not need to bid most of the jobs because they're under $3,000 and $50,000 is the cutoff for actual bid purposes, um, so this year we're only bidding materials for asphalt and the two minutes concrete and then hired services equipment for paving and trucks, triaxle duals and all that stuff, so we got three bids.
Hope you all, uh, break, break the seals.
The first bid is from Theody Construction, town of Holland, vote for equipment services and miscellaneous materials, this is not nearly as long as it was last year, okay. Roadwork items, four hour mineral, minimum for roadwork items, roadway pulverization and reclamation, $495 an hour, uh, roadway fine grading, $345 an hour, Gradall rubber tire excavator, grader with operator, $240 an hour, snow and ice services, greater- Snow and ice services, grader with front and wing plow operator, $270 an hour. Trucking ten wheeler with driver, $80 an hour. Trucking triaxle with driver, $85 an hour. One ton dump truck with driver, $70 an hour. Bear equipment, a 300 Bobcat loader, $80 an hour. Bowmag 100, MPH reclamer, $410 an hour. Champion 720 or JD 672 grader, $260 an hour. Grado rubber tired excavator grader, $155 an hour. Volvo 160 excavator, I mean, sorry, 160 excavator, $120 an hour. JD 230 excavator, $100 an hour. JD 410 G Baco, $110 an hour. Loader 3.5 CY, $100 an hour. TD 15 boat dozer, $100 an hour. Whole ram attachment, $100 an hour. Wood chipper, $100 an hour. Vibratory roller, $100 an hour. Direct labor supervisor, Jim Pioppi, $95 an hour. Equipment operator, $85 an hour. Laborer, $70 an hour. Miscellaneous material items. Bank gravel, per cubic yard pickup, $13 per cubic yard. Bank gravel delivered per cubic yard, $18. Hard pack processed gravel pickup per cubic yard, $12. Hard pack processed gravel delivered per cubic yard, $16. Fifty blasted rock, one quarter to one cubic inch, one cubic yard size pickup, $29.50 per cubic yard. Blasted rock, one quarter to one inch cubic yard size, delivered per cubic yard, $44.50. Is that all of them? That's all of them?
Awesome.
All right. I should have opened this one first because it came in first. So, if there is a match, or if there's the same price or less, this gets the bid because it came in first in time. Chip surface seal treatment, $234 per square yard. Double chip seal surfent treat, surface treatment, $415 per square yard. This is Allstate Asphalt Incorporated, excuse me. Newark chip seal surface treatment, $595 per square yard. 10% rubberized asphalt chip seal, $355 per square yard. 20% rubberized asphalt chip seal, $465 per square yard. Reclaim, fine grade compact with calcium chloride, $279 per square yard. Miscellaneous grading, $300 per hour. Miscellaneous rolling, $130 per hour. Wow, this is going so nice and fast. This is my last one, is from Palmer Paving. And Palmer Paving has type one bituminous concrete picked up per ton, $72. Coal patch picked up per ton, $105. Bituminous concrete in place, $300 to $799 per ton. Unit price is $80 per ton. And if they get 300 to 799 tons, it's $24,000. Bituminous concrete in place, 800 ton plus per ton is $76 dollars per unit price, and $60,800. Hard pack gravel picked up per ton, $9.50. And that, my friends, are all the highway bids. If you would like with the board, please make a motion to take and accept all bids as provisional and...
Subject to the highway supervisor's approval.
Subject to the highway supervisor's approval, yes, please.
Make that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next on the item, we've got the police cruiser and policy and surplus vehicles. And I think policy and surplus vehicles tie into the issue with respect to the police cruisers. So, let's talk about the policy first, because that may help us with the, with what the police department is requesting for their cruiser. What they're, what they're requesting is that they can, that they traded, they trade the cruiser in. And I think they said they could get, was it $3,500?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five hundred is a trade-in value. And the question is whether or not they can trade it in or whether we need to present it to the public and to the town in terms of trying to get a better selling price than the $2,500 that they will, that they're able to get as a trade-in. And Kelly, did you guys have a chance to look at this disposal surplus?
Yes.
Kelly, first of all, where did, where did you get this? Where did this summary come from?
The summary for disposal of surplus property, that is the Buckland, that's the Buckland Selectments Policy on Surplus, and it was written by their town council to meet the procurement laws.
All right.
And I thought, I got multiple samples, but this one seemed to be the most well-written. So, that's the one that I voted with.
Well, I'm not sure, I guess my question is, and I mean, this, this looks good to me in a way, but I'm not sure, do we have, there's a whole section in terms of outlining the process that you need to go through in order to dispose of a tangible property of $10,000 or less, including complete, prepare a complete list of the property to be disposed of, advertise the property, you know, we got to offer it to the town. There's a bunch of things that's in this second paragraph here in terms of process. And then, underneath is a bold point that says, "Surface vehicles with a value of less than $10,000 may be used as a trade-in for new vehicles to be purchased by the town." Is this policy saying that we need to go through all this process before we trade it in? Before we take the option of trading it in? That's unclear to me.
The way the policy is written, yes. The, the department that wants to have a piece of equipment or a tangible item declared a surplus needs to give you enough information that you have the ability to declare it a surplus. So, they don't have to actually advertise a pending sale or any of that. If the property is valued and no other department is interested, you can, you can edit this. They don't have to offer it for sale on a town website or offer it to other towns. This is just a within, it's a within-town thing, within government thing. So, it's not offered to the general public.
Well, there's something in there that says advertising it.
Advertise a pending sale by internet seller's site, notice the town website posting at municipal office, if possible. But you, if they're not intending to sell it, they want it as surplus, then they need to give you all the information that it's valued properly. You can take that out of there if you want and just have it, you know, an accurate value statement, which could be Kelly Blue Book or whatever. The, the point behind it is, in order to meet the procurement requirement and allow procurement, allow the town to dispose of surplus products. For instance, Cable has a whole bunch of furniture sitting in their office that is of no use to anyone. They offered it to everybody in town already.
They did.
So, you would, at that point, nobody wants it. You, as the board, would say, "We're declaring this surplus." That gives them permission to just get rid of it, because it's under $10,000. And procurement does not allow you to do that. The procurement law 30B does not allow you to do that unless you have a policy in place saying that that's what you want to do. So, these steps are here, because the procurement law requires that steps be in place to just declare something surplus. You can eliminate that entire, and just go, ooh, gone. So...
So, let me make sure, so you're saying, or are you saying, that if we adopt a policy, the laws allow for the policy as long as the police department demonstrates that the value of the property is under $10,000?
If that's one of the steps you want them to take.
Okay. But without going through a whole rigmarole of advertising and offering it to every person in the world, we could tell the police department, "You can trade it in." Is that the, I mean...
Well, trading it is another part of the process here. This is if they want to sell it. If they want to sell it, they have to do all of this.
Okay.
So, this is step one.
Yeah.
If you want, if you don't want to sell it, they want to trade it in, then they have to declare, you have to have it declared surplus, and then you say, "Okay, a surplus vehicle can be used." Once you've adopted this, then they have permission. It's, you say, "This is a surplus vehicle." Because this policy's in place, they then have permission to use it as a trade-in. So, without this being here, they cannot trade it in.
So, we need to adopt this policy, because we need to get rid of this police cruiser.
We can do the same thing with the fire trucks. And the other, other, there's two police vehicles that are surplus at this point.
So, if we adopt this policy, they can, they can trade it in? Is that the bottom line?
Yes, that is the bottom line.
Do I have a motion?
Would you like to make the motion to...
I'd like to make a comment.
Right ahead.
One of the things that I don't see in this policy that I'd like to see is some kind of timetable. Like, maybe another bullet that says, "Surplus supplies shall be disposed of within 12 months of becoming surplus."
What if they can't get rid of it? What's the repercussion?
I say we, the select board says, "Take it to a recycler."
Well, as surplus, you can absolutely, you can absolutely do that, yeah. Sure. That's fine. It's good to know that, yeah. That's, that's a good point.
I agree.
So, we've got a motion on the table to, to adopt the policy, a motion to amend the policy. To add the...
Disposed of within 12 months.
Disposed of within 12 months. Yeah, Jamie?
Question about it, is the new cruiser going out to bid?
No, this is, this is, you can comment on a specific motion that's on the table, okay? That's the pol, you know, we're, we're talking on a motion to dispose of property. We're not talking about a motion for the...
Okay, then I'll ask the question in a different way. Wouldn't it be more advantageous if the said object surplus in question was put into the package of having to be purchased back by the people that were bidding the new vehicle that replaces it? Instead of creating a policy?
No. This policy has to be in place. The vehicles that we're trading are not new. They're old. They have little or no trade-in value. The Kelly Blue Book value on one of the vehicles is $1,500. The dealer's offering $2,500 for it, but they can't use it as a trade-in without this policy being in place. There are, there are steps in here if they want to sell it, and procurement allows that. If they choose to sell it and they don't get a bid that they're looking for, or they don't get any bids, they can sell it for a dollar to the next person who walks in with cash. So, that's the way the procurement law is currently written.
All right. So, let's have a vote on the amendment, vote on the amendment to add the surplus items to be disposed within 12 months.
I make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. A motion on the policy is amended?
I make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, appointment of various boards and committees.
Ah, yes, I have the list.
We've got one specific Tristan Braun, Cable Committee for one year.
No, you're using the old agenda. That is not the agenda that I sent you.
Uh-uh. This is what I gave you, she sent it home.
Okay, so, here is, where, where is, the list is huge.
Awesome.
It's huge. Um, ba-ba-ba-ba, now I know what I have in my folder, because I took it out. Well, here, you read those and I'll go get the other list.
What I'm going to do is read the names. If somebody wants to discuss it in more detail, just say, "Hold," okay? So, I'm, I'm going to go through. If there's no holds, then we're going to vote the whole, the whole group as a single, as a single vote, okay? Police Department. Stuart Swain, Raymond Morehouse, Jordan, Matt Horn, Paul Gurian, Michael Murphy, Anastasios Karamakis.
Anastasios Karanakis.
Yeah, that's close enough. Edwin Ward, Spiro Kelly, Michael Turner, Ashley Jordan, Christopher Buchard, James Lamoth, Vincent Sullivan, Ryan Duff, Wayne Mark, and Gary Wilson is an animal control officer.
Gary's twice, because I, he's appointed by you, not the police chief, so I didn't, I didn't realize he'd be included in that one, so he's on here also.
Okay. Next, building inspector Jack Keough, Cable, Tristan Braun, and...
Wait, 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 you have to say what term's there for.
Okay. Building inspector Jack Keough, three-year term. Cable, Tristan Braun, and Jennifer Illinois, one year apiece. All boards clerk, Ginger Butu, Butu?
Butel.
Butel, one year. Animal control officer, we, Gary Wilson, one year. Community senate director, Brenda Palmer, one year. Conservation, Andy Harhey, three years.
Disappointed conservation, yeah, hold on, all the conservation ones. There was a mix-up on, I'll tell you after, go through it and then I'll tell you.
So, we'll put a, we'll go back with conservation afterwards, and you can talk about what the issue is. Council on Aging, Linda Rochene, John Sensman, Chris Haller, Ellen Percy. Open space, Annie Hall, Trails Commission, Annie Hall, electrical inspector. Robert Garren, plumbing inspector. George Walens, Walson Cross, emergency management director, Larry Mandell. Fire chief, James Gagny, hold for one year. Those are all one years, by, these are all one years, by the way. James Gagny, I want to hold for one year. Memorial Day Committee, Don Cass, one year. Samantha Cass Evans, one year. Outreach worker, we just appointed for, did we?
Yes, yes, we just appointed her for one year.
Police chief, Brian Hoy, three years. Richard London, zoning enforcement officer, one year. What is this with the...
Well, those were, I, I didn't know he was going to get me a list. And those are the ones I knew for sure were going to be reappointed, so I wanted to make sure that I, I had them on the list.
Okay, so, I, I would like a motion to approve these appointments other than the fire chief and the conservation.
I make a motion.
Can I ask a question about the police chief?
Yeah.
Yeah, after the motion. Okay.
I make a motion to accept everybody other than the ones we put on hold.
Okay, discussion.
So, we appoint the police chief for three years. Does that mean we're renewing his contract now, or what's the status?
His contract was, he has, he has a clause in his contract that it automatically renews on a yearly basis if it's not acted on within a certain amount of time. So, last year, it was up for renewal. And it took so long to get meetings together and so on and so forth, that by the time it got signed, there was only a couple of, there was just a very small window of time left for the first year. So, the contract was written in a way that he would be, he would sign his contract, and it would be good, and he would be reappointed this year for three years, and the contract would cover the entire amount. So, his contract is good for the continued three-year term.
Thank you.
Okay, so, you didn't get a second one?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's my light.
I'm sorry. It's going to take a couple weeks, rest time.
Okay, so, conservation. Conservation is by statute supposed to be a three-year term, not knowing that. When I had to appoint them over the last couple of years, I didn't put in the length of time that they're supposed to be appointed. So, Andy went to the trouble of finding out whose term expires when. And so, all of these people need to be reappointed. However, they need to be affirmed for the correct year amount so that it works out to the three-year term. So, you can appoint them now and then for the appropriate length of term to equal the statute. You follow me?
Okay.
Well, you're saying like Kathy was appointed for one year.
Kathy?
She should have been appointed for three years.
Out of order.
Right, right.
So, so, yes, last week, you appointed Caitlin, which I thought conservation terms were for two years. So, I had to appoint her for a two-year term. She needs to now be amended to a three-year term. Andy Harhey is already on the board. If we amend his term to be correct, he would be done next year. So, his term would end in 2019.
So, then we don't need to reappoint him?
You need to reappoint him to meet the appropriate number of years of appointment, because he was only appointed for one year, so...
So, we're changing...
You're just reforming?
So, are we changing the one-year retroactive to his original appointment date? Is that what, I mean, what are you saying?
So, what you're saying is, you're going to, you're going to make a motion to appoint and enlist them for the appropriate length term and reaffirm those who were previously appointed to meet the statute. And then, I will put in the appropriate year based on when they were sworn in.
So, then, for example, Andy was appointed last year for a one-year term. It should be a three-year term. So, his term would be effective 2017, 17, 18, and 19. So, that's what the three-year period would encompass, is that correct?
That's good in theory, yes, except that Andy was appointed in 17. But you have... That's good in theory, yes, except that Andy was appointed in 17, but you have the right idea. So he was appointed in 17, it should've been for three years. It was for two because I thought they were for two.
Okay.
And so he, he would be, I thought he was up this year, he's actually up next year. So you're just confirming the appointment as pretty appropriately.
So I make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And the, the other item is, is the Fire Chief. There is some concerns that have been brought to my attention. Ernie, this is your first day as a selectman and I want, before we make a commitment, a long-term commitment to the Fire Chief, I wanna make sure that everyone understands what all the issues are. I'm not gonna discuss any specifics tonight. What I would like to see is somebody offering a motion to extend his, his current-
Contract for a hundred.
Contract for three months.
No, it's not a contract.
It's not a current employment relationship with the town.
We'll appoint him for another 90 days. Is that the correct wording?
Yeah.
No, I'm asking Kelly, is that the correct wording?
Yes, to, to extend his current appointment for an additional ninety days.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I got the next one.
Okay.
Because it's warrant signed.
Okay, warrant signed.
Counts payable, $31,675.66, payroll, $120,781.35.
Okay. The following is seeking members. zoning board of appeals, one alternate member, OPEP, two members, bylaw committee, one member, capital planning committee, one member, not affiliated with any other board or committee, and cable committee, one member. Public access.
I'm Chris McColl, Lake Ridge Drive. And I had a lot of things to ask you guys tonight, but I wanna, I wanna preference all of this with, I wanna thank Kelly from the HRA and from me personally for all the services you've done over the last three years. And I know she can't have gifts, but this is only a dollar gift. And it comes from the HRA and I would like her to take it to her new job. And I'll take this and-
Thank you. And it'll go with my T-shirt that says, "HRA."
Because-
I'm gonna report that to-
It's under $50.
It's under $50.
It's definitely for my pen, buddy.
There's probably a diamond tip on it.
I think she's done a terrific job and she's helped all of us and she's helped the HRA a lot and I truly appreciate that and I know many people do too.
She has done a wonderful job.
That's all I have to say tonight.
And we would all be lost without her.
Yes, and that's actually part of-
I'm sorry.
And that's actually part of my comments. So I had a couple of notes under public access and comments. Kelly, you've done a fantastic job, we're gonna miss you. You know, we've been lucky for the last three years to have somebody with your background and your understanding of municipal law and, you know, you know, I think we look at you not only as an associate but as a friend and we're gonna miss you and, but you'll, we'll see you, we'll see you around town. So good luck in that new hometown that you're going to.
So you didn't get what we got. We had her to help us through the beginning of it.
Yeah.
She'll be a phone call away, right?
Yep, that's what I told everybody, I'm just a phone call away.
And the other item I wanted to mention is just remember that the community center during hot days is available for a cooling center as well. I talked to the director of the community center and for really hot days, she'd be willing to extend the hours. I think they close at three as we move into the summer and have some oppressive days. Those community center hours may be extended beyond three o'clock in the afternoon. We'll notify the town one way or the other, either through Cable or maybe a Code Red or whatever on those hot days, but just remember that if it's hot, you don't have an air conditioner, head over to the community center and cool off.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You need to pick one of you to do the minutes going forward until you have a town administrator.
Do I have a volunteer?
You, I was gonna get nominated anyways, didn't matter.
Do I have a motion to appoint Bettina as temporary minute taker until we have a full-time replacement for Kelly?
Do you have that motion?
I second it.
I'm staying.
Well, look, I'm-
That's because she has the best time.
Oh, no, she doesn't. Her penmanship is horrendous, but-
Okay, is there anything else? Any of you guys have anything?
Nope.
Anyone else?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, my God.